We'll call this meeting to order of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for February 20th, 2018. Roll call, Mr. Viewer.
Layland.
Here.
Little. Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received as proposed to the amendment.
Some move.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Public comments? Anybody from the public like to comment anything other than what's on the agenda? If so, come to up to the microphone. See none. Claims and payments resolution for the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures for the county.
Some move.
The county's expenditures total six hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Six-four-three, four-eight-seven point two-five. That includes approximately three hundred and forty-seven thousand for two trucks in the engineer's office.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion on any of the items? This resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Resolution to approve expenditures for Country View.
Country View's expenditures this week total three hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and four dollars and eight cents. Three-six-two, six-zero-four point zero-eight. That includes about three hundred and three thousand for January benefits.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? This resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted.
Mr. Chairman, uh, the record should show that Supervisor Little is attending this meeting electronically by phone.
Thank you, Pete. Next is receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. All right, Kathy?
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer.
Good morning.
Of course, the roads are slick in many places. However, they are improving throughout the county. It seems like the northwest portion of the county, the roads are slicker in that portion of the county. The trucks have been outstanding and salting this morning. Uh, right now, we've, they've been called back in because it's melting and it seems to be improving. I, I think in the next few hours, there, there may be a possibility of more rain, so the road conditions may worsen for several hours, but hopefully by this afternoon, by this evening's commute, roads are pretty much back to normal. I would like to remind the public and the audience that a good source of information for road conditions, particularly if you're traveling statewide, is to go to five-one-one IA dot O R G, and that gives statewide conditions of roads. It also gives, uh, the viewer a chance to look at the images of the cameras that are in some of the DOT snowplows. We do not have that capability here in Blackhawk County on our snowplows, but if people are interested, that's a very good website for current road conditions across the state. Uh, can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other department heads or elected officials? Moving on to minutes approved for February thirteenth and fifteenth of two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Next is hearings times are approximate. Nine oh five hearing on bid opening for proposed project thirty-oh-five with Jessup-Marquee overlay. Nine oh seven ordinance number seventy-seven dash one ninety-eight rezoned by Lisa Hannigan. And, uh, nine oh nine ordinance number seventy-seven dash one ninety-nine rezoned request by Michelle Johansson. Next is consent agenda by resolution.
Some move.
Second.
Move in second. Any discussion on any of the items? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is contracts and agreements. This is a resolution at the business associate agreement between Blackhawk County and Preferred One regarding the use and disclosure of preferred help information be approved as recommended by Deb Bunker, HR Director.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is other business. This is a resolution at the lowest reasonable bid received from the Conference Technologies Iowa to Iowa for courtroom four thirteen renovation with a bid of fifty thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-three cents be approved as recommended by Brian Williams, County Attorney.
Some move. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Brian, when will this work be done?
I think four to six weeks. It'll take about a week to complete.
Okay.
Any other question for Brian?
You know, this company was the lowest bidder, but...
It was the only bidder at the time. We sent out the three, and they're the ones who responded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution to authorize the county attorney to proceed with a lawsuit against former conservation ranger Brandon Rogala to recover a portion of the cost of his training at the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy per the contract between Blackhawk County and Ranger Rogala.
Some move.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution that the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors proclaim support for the Homebase Iowa Initiative. It also encourages Blackhawk County businesses to take the action necessary to become and continue to be a Homebase Iowa business. Good morning.
Morning. How are you?
Good.
Morning.
Thanks for the opportunity to come and talk to you about this initiative. My name's Cassie Grimsman, and I work on the Economic Development Team at the Cedar Valley Alliance in Chamber. And I've been working on preparing Blackhawk County to be a Homebase Iowa community for the past few months. So I'll just tell you a little bit about what it takes to become a community and what we have done so far. So Homebase Iowa is an initiative that was put forward by Governor Terry Branstad. And it's a program that helps bridge Iowa's skills gap by connecting transitioning veterans transitioning service members and veterans and connecting them with businesses in Iowa that can hire them into open positions. So to become a Homebase Iowa community, a community must provide an incentive package, provide business support, provide signage locations, and host an event announcing that they're a Homebase Iowa community, and they also must pass a resolution. Uh, we've completed the first of these three steps, and we plan to announce that we are a Homebase Iowa community um, at our Good Morning Cedar Valley on March twenty-ninth if this resolution passes. Um, I provided incentive, I provided PDFs of our incentives and business support and also those signage locations for you to refer to. Our community incentives include complimentary membership to the Cedar Valley Young Professionals and the J.C.'s, free passes to Marcus Theaters and the Waterloo Blackhawks, complimentary services at Salon Professional Academy and Jimlin Service, discounts to Lost Island, gift cards to Quick Star, and a free gym, gym membership at Key West, the Sportsplex, and the Cedar Valley Rec Center for veterans that have PTSD. These incentives, um, were all really well supported by businesses that we reached out to, and they'll help just welcome these veterans to call Blackhawk County home. We also have forty-three businesses already on board, so these businesses have created profiles on Homebase Iowa's websites so that they can post their job openings, which will then be displayed to veterans who are using Homebase Iowa's website. Um, any of these veterans that would then move to Blackhawk County to take one of these positions would then, um, be given all of those incentives that are in the package that I mentioned before. So it just gives our Blackhawk County businesses a leg up when they are recruiting and competing, um, with other Iowa companies and other companies all across the nation. We'll be placing five signs displaying that we're a Homebase Iowa community at locations leading into the county. And these signs have all been, um, determined with the Iowa DOT, and those locations are in the PDF that I provided. In my role at Alliance in Chamber, I work with businesses daily. Um, and the biggest concern that I hear from our businesses is lack of available workforce. So this initiative is just a way that we can open up a new pool of qualified applicants to our businesses. That gives you an idea of where we're at with this program and the benefits of the program. Do you have any questions?
Have you been coordinating these efforts with, um, our Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs Department?
Yep, yep, I have worked with him, and that, um, that's actually how that gym membership for veterans with PTSD came about, and he, uh, expressed that we could share that incentive on this package too.
Thank you, thanks for the work you're doing.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. It is now nine twelve. This is nine oh five hearing bid opening on the proposed Jessup and Marquee Overlay Project. Motion to receive and place on file proof of publication.
Some move. Second. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion to close the hearing after oral written comments are received. Any written comments, Grant?
No, sir.
Any oral comments?
Is it motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Motion to close the hearing. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Bids to be received and open in red, bid deadline was three o'clock yesterday. Did they all meet the deadline, Kathy?
Yes, all the bids did meet the deadline.
How many bids we get?
We did get five.
Five? Alright, thank you.
First bid we have is from Boulder Construction. We did receive a bid bond with it. Their bid totals one hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty cents. One-nine-one, two-eight-one, point four-zero. Second bid we received was from Kramer and Associates. Did also receive a bid bond with that. Their bid totals two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty cents. Two-nine-seven, six-five-five, point five-zero. Third bid is from Jasper Construction Services. Bid bond with that one as well. Their bid totals two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and ninety cents. Two-two-eight, seven-four-zero, point nine-zero. Fourth bid is from Taylor Construction. Again, we do have a bid bond with that one as well. Total cost of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two-hundred and six dollars. Three-six-eight, two-oh-six, point zero-zero. And the last bid received was from Wick's Construction. Again, we do have a bid bond with that. Their bid totaled two hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and forty-eight point dollars and forty cents. Two-one-two, five-four-eight, point four-zero.
Motion that the Board of Supervisors review, review and place on file the bids to allow time for the review of the statements.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is a nine oh seven hearing on the proposed ordinance number seventy-seven dash one-nine-eight of, for Hannigan rezon. Motion to receive and place on file proof of publication.
Some move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion to waive the first reading of the ordinance was published on February ninth.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Motion to close the hearing as oral and written comments were received and placed on file. Any oral comments? Any written comments?
No, sir.
Any oral comments? Ron, Seth.
Okay. Okay, yeah, the Planning and Zoning Commission had its regular meeting on January twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, reviewed the requests to rezone seven point eight-seven acres from a agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district to allow for the construction of two new single-family homes. Property is located west of seven-four, three-seven West Marquee Road. Um, the property's been zoned a agricultural, um, let's see, oh, sorry. Um, yeah, request to rezone seven point eight-seven acres from a agricultural district, AR agricultural residential district, in order to build two new single-family homes. It was moved by Beck and seconded by SAC to approve the request to rezone seven point eight-seven acres from a agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district in order to build two new single-family homes. Uh, carried five-one with NAGL voting aid due to the loss of hay production at the site. Uh, the property's been zoned a agricultural district since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in nineteen eighty-two. Uh, the immediate area primarily consists of rural homes and wooded areas. Uh, the surrounding area is zoned AR agricultural residential district to the south, which contains twenty-seven homes, uh, known as the Sylvan Acres subdivision. Um, a agricultural district with wooded areas and open space, uh, to the west, a agricultural district and AR agricultural residential district with rural homes to the east, and Bremmer County with rural homes homes to the north. Uh, the Shell Rock River is also sixteen hundred, uh, feet, feet to the west. Um, the property in the surrounding area to the south and east are identified as residential. It should be noted that there are only a small number of areas on the future land use map that are designated as residential, um, in the county. Uh, to the north are Bremmer County Parks and Open Space, to the west, future, of the, on the future land use map, a component of the Blackhawk County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Uh, the applicant wishes to rezone seven point eight-seven acres from a agricultural district to agriculture residential district in order to build two new single-family homes in the property. The two lots, uh, proposed rezoned areas will be four point three acres and three point nine acres inside. Both lots shall have a deed restriction uh, placed on them that will prevent them from being split again. Uh, both sites meet the lot and size requirements for the AR agricultural residential district by being greater than one point five acres in size and wider than a hundred feet. Um, yeah, and, uh, the minor, uh, basically this is also being, uh, submitted with the, with the second minor plat application. Uh, the minor plat area contains twenty-five point seven acres and sixteen point six-one acres are going to be placed in the Conservation Reserve Program. One acre will be community garden that will be notated to the Sylvan Acres subdivision. The applicant has stated that the majority of the seven point eight-seven acres that are being rezoned and to develop laws will remain in hay production. It should also be noted that the applicant has been diligently working with the Sylvan Acres subdivision to address their concerns such as easements and to minimize the amount of land that is developed. Uh, none of the technical review committee had concerns regarding this request.
So Seth, there is no opposition from any of the adjacent property owners?
Um, they, uh, the, uh, let's see, at the, uh, the president of the Sylvan Acres, um, what was at the, the planning and zoning meeting, and they, they didn't have any issues. Uh, the applicant has worked really hard with them just to, you know, address what their concerns are, so um, we ended up not having any opposition from the Sylvan Acres subdivision, uh, due to the applicant working continually with them to address their concerns.
And you did mention that the, these, um, two plots would not be able to be divided again?
That is correct. There'll, there'll be a deed restriction, so there's only going to be two homes placed in the rezoned area, and the majority of it is going to be basically left open either CRP or as a community garden.
I don't have any other questions.
Any other questions for Seth? Thanks, Seth.
Alright, thank you.
I don't know if there's anyone in the audience or...
Anyone, anyone from the audience like to speak on this? Have a motion on the floor to close hearing after oral written comments are received.
Second.
All in, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. This is a resolution to suspend rules requiring the Board of Supervisors to consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is an ordinance adoption at ordinance amending, ordinance number thirty-six is amended. The Blackhawk County Iowa Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February second, nineteen ninety-nine, adding subsection nine, number one ninety-eight to section six B, rezoning certain property as described in the above request as Lisa Hannigan.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Moving on to nine oh nine hearing on the proposed ordinance number seventy-seven dash one ninety-nine. Johansson rezoned. Motion to receive and place on file.
Some move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Motion to waive the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Motion to close the hearing after oral written comments are received. Any written comments?
No, sir.
Ron, young man.
Hi, Tim Mandera, uh, Blackhawk County Planning and Zoning Department. Uh, this request was reviewed at that January twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen meeting, uh, applicant's Michelle Johansson. She wants to rezone one point nine acres of land from A to AR agricultural residential district to construct one new single-family home. Uh, at that meeting, it was moved by NCION, seconded by Beck to deny the request to rezone the one point nine acres from A to AR. Uh, the motion to deny carried five-one with words voting against. Therefore, since it was a motion to deny, it is a supermajority vote of the Board of Supervisors needed to pass the rezon. The area is just north of sixty-six twenty-four North Union Road, which is about a quarter mile south of the intersection of North Union and West Cedar Wopsi Road. Uh, the area requested to rezone to AR has been zoned a agricultural since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in nineteen eighty-two. Uh, Blackhawk County Future Land Use Map does designate this area as residential. Uh, therefore, the proposed rezoning request would be in conformance with such designation. Uh, the area is not located within a special flood hazard area. Site has a lease a score of one ninety-eight, which is moderate ag value. Um, and that lease a score of one ninety-eight is on the low end of the moderate agricultural value. Uh, the applicant's father owns the thirty-two acre parcel, and most of the land is in ag production, except for an area of grow of trees on the southeast part of the property. Uh, parcel is not a lot of rec, or is a lot of record, which means that the current boundaries that are there today now did exist in nineteen eighty-two. The rezon request, uh, if the rezoning request is approved, uh, they will have to go through a minor plat to split that one point nine acre, uh, parcel off. Area where they want to rezone is in currently, uh, crop production according to the aerial photos. However, based on the compatible surrounding residential land uses and the future land use map designation residential and the moderate lease a score, uh, the request would appear to be a acceptable use of the property. Uh, there are three homes located on the west side of North Union Road, and there are seven homes located to the west and northwest, all the way up to north, or west Cedar Wopsi Road.
Thank you, Mr. Mandera.
Yep.
Any questions for...
Yeah, Tim, you did mention, I mean, the moderate ag, ag value, obviously in that low score. And typically, I know we like to follow what the P and Z, the decision is. Um, and I know this takes a supermajority for us to overturn it, but I, I guess I'm trying to understand the strong viewpoints. If they gave something more, I guess I know...
I guess the biggest viewpoint they gave at the meeting that day was they were concerned that this is prime agricultural ground that could be coming out of production if...
But it was a prime, I guess.
But, yeah, that's what they did say.
Okay, alright. And this is the father's land. I guess, I know we all received a letter, I think a letter from him. Um, that, you know, making a case for wanting his daughter and family to live on this land. And maybe they're here today. I don't know to speak on their behalf.
They are here today if they...
I can wait till...
Do you have any other questions for me?
Thank you.
Anyone from the public like to discuss? Just take your name and address, please, sir.
Chris Johansson, twenty-eight oh three Ryan Drive.
Better talk a little louder so I can pick you.
Chris Johansson, twenty-eight oh three Ryan Drive, Cedar Falls. Um, I was going to read the, uh, the letter that, uh, Shelley's parents had wrote. They're the landowners. Uh, dear Board of Supervisors, thank you for your time and consideration. As you know, we would like to rezone one point nine eight acres of our land for our daughter and son-in-law to build a home. My parents, Ralph and Alice Mae Shield, bought this farm ground in nineteen forty-four when I was two years old. I lived there my entire upbringing. I also married and we raised our children, Scott and Shelley, there. We farm the ground while we work full-time. We have hopes and plans for our daughter and her family to build their forever home on our family farm. We would like their family to live there and make lasting memories, to keep a watchful eye on the land, and also help with the maintenance. Keeping our remaining farm ground in production is very important to all of us. Shelley actually enjoyed picking rocks from the field, walking the beans, and helping to fix fences. She, her husband, and their kids will be good stewards of the land. Aside from our wish for them to be allowed to build and live here, there are also tax income benefits to this request. These two acres have annual taxes of twenty-one dollars an acre. The three homes directly to the south of the rezon request area have annual average taxes of sixteen hundred, thirty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents an acre. Approving this request would put an estimated amount of thirty-two hundred in the county coffer. Over a time of span of fifteen years, this would total an estimated forty-eight thousand as opposed to three hundred and sixty dollars as tillable land. Thanks again for your thoughtful consideration. Sincerely, John and Judy Shield.
You got a copy?
No, I, I don't know. That's just one of the file. I didn't see it. Did you provide that to the board?
Yes.
Yeah.
It was mailed out.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much. Motion to close the hearing after oral written comments are... Oh, sorry, something else. Sorry about that.
Right, I brought my phone to set a timer on myself.
We don't have a timer here.
Uh, my name's Tom Bauer. I'm, uh, adjoining, well, not adjoining, across the road landowner at sixty-six thirty-three North Union and, uh, Chairman White and members of the Board of Supervisors. I spoke at the Planning and Zoning, uh, Commission hearing and spoke in favor of Shelley's request, uh, that this be rezoned. Um, we would appreciate having Shelley and her family as neighbors. Uh, I teach at U and I one night a week. And as I drove home last night from what would be New Hartford Road, Beaver Valley Road, to Cedar Wopsi Road, there are sixteen homes on that property on Union Road, and they're all in clumps. This house would be in an additional clump, and there are sixteen homes in that three miles. But where the clumps aren't, there's agricultural land, so it is very agricultural in that area. You know, in talking to Shelley over the years, and I've known her for a while, she was my, I shouldn't say this, she was my, uh, personal trainer, and obviously I flunked her class. But, uh, um, in talking to her over the years, the, her feeling for this land runs deep. Um, this is not someone who wants to go in and build a home and then move and then build another home or anything like that. Some people go to ancestry dot com or twenty-three and me to find their roots. Uh, Shelley's roots are really in this property. Uh, to have her across the street would not bother us in the least, and I think she would be a wonderful addition. I've been on that land before. I'm not a farmer by any means. Uh, but, uh, to say that it's, um, moderate is, is probably on a good day. I would say it's more marginal farmland than it is anything. And I know that the Planning and Zoning Board has a mandate about agricultural land, and I understand, uh, that that runs deep in this community. But to excise or to take... But to excise or to take a small portion of the land for someone who's going to further deal with that land in a positive way seems to make sense to me. And lastly, if you go just a little bit north of where we live, to Cedar Wopsi and Union, you'll be right at Turkey Foot Heights. If you go just a little bit north and east of Turkey Foot Heights, or actually due east, you have Buck Ridge. So this is not a agricultural area as we might think. This is an area that I think may be slowly changing. You know, Mr. Knock just put three new lots and built some homes on Cedar Wopsi and that hasn't changed the makeup of the community of our neighborhood. And with the, with Cedar Wopsi, the intersection there at the highway and with the new bridge that's coming, you know, it wouldn't surprise me if more people want to be there. And that is for another day, but at this day, it seems to me, we'd be happy to have her. And I know it takes a supermajority and if I can answer any questions, I'm happy to do so. And my timer of three minutes is almost ready to go off.
Self-imposed.
Self-imposed, yeah, you bet. But I really have no concern, my wife is here, she's afraid to appear in public. Mainly it's with me, I don't know, but she would reiterate exactly what I've told you. It's not something we've jumped into lightly. We've thought about the impact it might have on our property, not only the value, but the neighbor, neighborhood as a whole and we're all for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
A question for the prospective homeowners, do you have plans on planting a number of trees around your home and that sort of thing?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Add some trees in on the lot.
You can have a workout area for Tom back there.
And, Tim, just to reiterate, I think you said too, in the county's future land use map, the area is designated residential, correct?
That's correct.
I guess I have a question to, to lessen the impact on agricultural land. Is there any consideration of reducing the, the portion of six, sixty-six twenty-four, reducing that size? And reducing the amount of acres that are involved in the proposal?
That, yeah, I...
If you could come up to the microphone.
That wasn't anything that we've taken into consideration with this request.
Kyle Helen, Helen Engineering, helped Shelley put the application together. And the reason we're at one-point-nine acres is instead of going to an expense and actually surveying the property prior to rezoning, we tried to put a legal description together on paper that we could address this. Now, you do realize that there is a driveway on the north side of the property. That driveway will extend into the field and that's, they're going to be the access to the field, so that's not going to be agricultural. Minimum requirement is one-point-five, we're at one-point-nine. This restricts that she can't come back and split it again. There's no intent into incorporate all one-point-nine. You know, the house is going to have a small footprint, so it's just a kind of a fictitious number. We are under two acres, we are above the minimum requirement of one-point-five. And because we're below three, it restricts her from splitting it again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Have a motion on the floor to close the hearing.
Not yet.
All in favor, aye?
Second.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor, aye? Opposed, motion carried. Resolution to suspend rules requiring the Board of Supervisors to consider and vote on proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is an ordinance adoption at the ordinance amending number, ordinance number thirty-six is amended. The Blackhawk County Iowa Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February second, nineteen ninety-nine, adding section number, subsection number one-ninety-nine to the section six-B, rezoning certain property as described in the above request admitted by Michelle Johansson and to consider its name for adoption and adopted would be known as ordinance number seventy-seven dash one-nine-nine.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Maxman.
Oh.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Resolution fails. Next is a resolution at the Minor Plat of Survey submitted by Lisa Hannigan to minor plat twenty-five-point-four-seven acres located at west of seventy-four thirty-seven West Marquee Road to build two new single-family homes, have land set aside for the Conservation Reserve Program and a Sylvan Acres Neighborhood Association Community Garden of four-point-three acres and parcel of three-point-four-nine acres. Parcel zone AR agricultural residential, sixteen-point-sixty-one acres parcel and a point-nine-nine acre parcel remains owned agriculture district. The property in question is located at seventy-four thirty-seven West Marquee Road, just south of West Marquee Road.
Okay, yeah, the Planning and Zoning Commission had the regular meeting on January twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, reviewed the requests submitted by Lisa Hannigan to plat twenty-five-point-four-seven acres into four lots with seven-point-eight-seven acre zone agricultural residential district and seventeen-point-six acre zone agricultural district in order to allow for the construction of two new single-family homes, properties located west of seven-four thirty-seven West Marquee Road. And the request to plat approximately twenty-five-point-four-seven acres to build two new single-family homes and have land set aside for the Conservation Reserve Program and Sylvan Acres Association's Community Garden. It was moved by Beck and seconded by SAC to approve the request to plat twenty-five-point-four-seven acres to build two new single-family homes, have land set aside for Conservation Reserve Program and Sylvan Acres Neighborhood Association Community Garden. Motion to approve carried five-one with a nagel voting nay concerned about land being taken out of hay production. The property in question is located west of seven-four thirty-seven West Marquee Road and just south of West Marquee Road and Sylvan Drive intersection. Four-point-three-eight parcel and three-point-four-nine acre parcel being rezoned to AR Agriculture Residential District as part of the separate rezone application request in order to allow for the construction of two new single-family homes. A sixteen-point-sixty-one acre parcel and point-nine-nine acre parcel remains owned A agricultural district as part of the minor plat request. Land has been zoned A agricultural district since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in nineteen eighty-two. The immediate area primarily consists of rural homes and wooded areas. The surrounding area is zoned AR agricultural residential district to the south, which contains twenty-seven homes in the Sylvan Acres subdivision. A agricultural district with wooded areas and open space to the west. A agricultural district and AR agricultural district with rural homes to the east in Bremmer County with rural homes to the north. Shell Rock River is about sixteen-hundred feet to the west. The property and surrounding area to the south and east are identified as residential. Bremmer County to the north and Parks and Open Space to the west on the future land use map, a component of the Blackhawk County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. It should be noted that very few areas in the county are zoned residential on the future land use map. The property in question is not located in a special flood hazard area designated by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The applicant is requesting a minor plat for lots of four-point-three-eight acre parcel and three-point-four-nine acre parcel being rezoned to AR Agriculture Residential District as part of a separate rezone application request in order to allow for the construction of two new single-family homes. A sixteen-point-sixty-one acre parcel and point-nine-nine acre parcel will remain zoned A agricultural district as part of the minor plat request. The applicant has been diligently working with the Sylvan Acres Neighborhood Association. Their concerns regarding an easement and overall development of the property. Alder Miller was granted a sixty-foot wide easement from Lisa Hannigan in order to maintain access to his property that is located in the southwest of the minor plat area, which has already been recorded with the county. It should also be noted that both the four-point-three-eight acre parcel and three-point-four-nine acre parcel are being rezoned to agriculture residential district. Shall have a deed restriction placed on both properties to prevent them being from split in the future. In addition, the applicant plans to minimize development of both lots and keep the majority of the land in hay production. The technical review committee did not have concerns regarding this request.
Any questions for Seth?
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted, thanks, Seth. Any reports or information from the board? Entertainer motion.
Mr. Chair, I just want to comment, took the opportunity yesterday morning to go down to Des Moines to speak with the Director, Randall, about our concerns about reimbursements from the private pay companies. We currently have a dispute over the reimbursement of about five-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars and the MCO is willing to pay us a hundred-and-forty-three thousand dollars. So we went down to make our case yesterday and we'll be looking forward to what their interpretation of this is going to be.
Thank you for doing that, Frank.
Thank you.
Any other reports? Mr. Little, get better.
Thank you.
Yes.
Entertainer motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?